I'd like to welcome Mayor Wilner to the March Meeting of City Council. Let's rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the Lord, to the God of which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's read the minutes of the council meeting of February the eighth.
Mayor Milner opened the council meeting welcoming everyone, asking all to stand and place the allegiance to the flag. Members present, Ms. Valeria Bowman, Ms. Vivian Stewart, Ms. Josephine Chapman, Vice Mayor Bobby Chapman. The mayor asked for a reading of the January eighth, twenty thirteen council meeting. After the reading, he asked if there were any corrections or changes council wanted to make. With none requested, he asked for motion to approve minutes that had read. Ms. Bowman made the motion to approve minutes and was seconded by Ms. Stewart. Mayor Milner asked all who agreed to signify by saying aye. All agreed and the motion carried. He then asked for a reading of the minutes of the special call meeting, January the ninth, twenty thirteen. After the reading, he asked if there were any corrections or additions to the minutes. There were none and he asked for motion to approve. Motion was made to approve by Mr. Chapman and seconded by Ms. Stewart. When asked by the mayor, all agreed to approve the minutes. There was no response from public request and the mayor moved on to the mayor's report. He stated Chief Gibson had interviewed Scott Swain, who worked with us for a short time, and asked him to come back and work about eight hours per month at no cost to the city since the council had agreed. And since the council had agreed to use his services in the past, he did not see there being any problem with him returning. There was no response from the council members and the mayor said he would take that as agreement. The CBBG and EPA grant projects both are thought to be completed. There will be a public hearing on February the twelfth at eleven a.m. in City Hall. There will be representatives from the Department of Community Affairs and our construction contractor will be there as well. As Adam Smith Consulting, our grandmaster of studies and our engineer. Mayor Milner stated everyone was welcome to attend the public hearing. The ad was published in a paper and posted on the front door. Mayor Milner explained the financial reports stating the city is in good condition. We had financing for the wheelhouse and the budget for twenty twelve and the bills have not come in. We will do budget adjustments with the current year budget to account for the fact that costs ran over into this year. With no questions from the council concerning the financial report, the mayor continued to new business, to old business. Under old business, he read the title of ordinance twenty twelve dash twelve dash one, reminding council members, this is the ordinance reviewed in the earlier public hearing. He requested a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twelve dash twelve dash one. Ms. Bowman made a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Correct. Ms. Chapman made a motion.
Ms. Chapman made a motion to adopt the ordinance and was seconded by Ms. Bowman. Mayor Milner asked if there was any discussion on the ordinance. Ms. Stewart asked if there was a limit on the number of animals in a kennel. The mayor stated it could be any numbers. Ms. Stewart asked Ms. Jones how many animals she had. Ms. Jones stated she was licensed by the state and was allowed up to forty animals. There was no further discussion and the mayor asked the clerk to poll council members. Ms. Chapman and Ms. Bowman voted yes to adopt ordinance twenty twelve dash twelve dash one. Ms. Stewart, Mr. Chapman and Mayor Milner voted no not to adopt ordinance twenty twelve dash twelve dash one. Mayor Milner stated the motion failed two to three. At this time, Ms. Stewart asked if she could have a new ordinance drafted with a number and the mayor told her she could. Ms. Stewart will let the mayor know total amount was allowed she wants in the ordinance. The mayor moving to the new business, he introduced ordinance twenty thirteen dash two dash one and read the title of the ordinance. Explained the sheriff recently discovered there was not a city ordinance on disorderly conduct. This is being proposed so any charges in the city can be tried in municipal court. Mayor Milner requested someone to sponsor ordinance twenty thirteen dash twelve dash one.
Should be dash two dash one.
Twenty thirteen dash two dash one. Ms. Stewart stated she was sponsored the ordinance. The next item introduced by the mayor was ordinance twenty thirteen dash twelve dash two.
It should be dash two dash two.
Twenty thirteen dash two dash two. This ordinance affects the order of business at our regular public meetings. The code as written requires the reading of the minutes. He said he didn't know any other meetings where the minutes has to be read at each meeting. If this ordinance is adopted, the minutes of the previous meeting will not have to be read. The other change that this proposes is to use the language that we have been using since Ms. Lawrence's time is public request. The language in the ordinance says public grievance. He thought public request was a little broader and friendlier. These two changes will take effect if this ordinance is adopted. He requested that's called. Ms. Chapman responded saying she was sponsored. Ordinance twenty thirteen dash two dash two. The mayor stated the next item is resolution twenty thirteen dash zero zero one, supporting improvement in Alexander H. Stevens State Park. The mayor read the resolution, explained it allowed the contribution of three thousand dollars to provide additional electrical service in the state park. The transfer of these funds to the Talbot County Economic Development Authority was delayed pending state approval of the project. Documentation required by state for final approval is nearing completion and will be submitted shortly. This resolution is the same as the one twenty twelve dash zero zero two council approved last year to give to the park to make the improvements. Mayor Milner stated the mayor and council will continue to support this effort and will contribute three thousand dollars towards financing this undertaking. The mayor then asked for a motion to approve resolution twenty thirteen dash zero zero one. Ms. Chapman made the motion to approve resolution twenty thirteen dash zero zero one and was seconded by Ms. Bowman. The clerk told the council members and all members voted yes to approve the resolution. The motion carried unanimously. The mayor stated that concluded the business on the agenda and adjourned the meeting.
Any corrections or additions to the minutes? I note that there are several places where the typed copy or the ordinance numbers need to be corrected. I didn't see any other corrections needed. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes with corrections?
I most definitely approve the minutes with the noted corrections.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stewart, seconded by Ms. Bowman. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, fine. Motion carried. Minutes are approved. Would the clerk read the minutes of the special call council meeting of February the nineteenth, twenty thirteen?
Mayor Milner welcomed council members and asked all to stand and place the allegiance to the flag. Members present, Ms. Josephine Chapman, Vice Mayor Bobby Chapman, Ms. Valeria Bowman and Ms. Vivian Stewart. There was not any public bill citizens in this audience for this meeting. The mayor stated there were two resolutions on the agenda. He explained the state suspended our ability to use radar after they investigated the former police chief. In fact, he was not in compliance with the law in his radar calibration. Our new chief has been trying to get a radar permit re-certified. They would not accept the two resolutions we passed in twenty ten, which were identical to the two you have before you tonight. They insisted that they have new original signatures on resolutions that are current. The chief is in class this week getting certified in radar. If we get the resolution passed, he will have to have police cars certified. Then we can go back into the enforcement business. Mayor Milner introduces resolution twenty thirteen dash zero zero two, a resolution approving use of speed detection devices within the city limits. This resolution approves the use of speed detection devices in his law enforcement. He then asked for motion to approve the resolution. A motion was made by Ms. Bowman to approve the resolution twenty thirteen dash two zero zero two and was seconded by Ms. Stewart. When polled by clerk, all voted yes to approve. The motion carried unanimously. The mayor then introduced resolution twelve, twenty thirteen dash zero zero four, a resolution adopting speed limits within the city, explaining this ordinance is also one council adopted in twenty ten. It defines the points on state routes where speed limit changes. This way the signs, the way the signs are posted throughout the city. This gets us the authorization we need. He asked for motion to adopt twenty thirteen dash zero zero four. Ms. Chapman made the motion to adopt resolution twenty thirteen zero zero four and was seconded by Ms. Bowman. When polled by clerk, all voted yes to adopt resolution twenty thirteen dash zero zero four. The motion carried unanimously. There be no further meetings to discuss. Mayor Milner adjourned the meeting.
I have a motion to approve the minutes as read.
I'll make a motion for the minutes to be approved as read.
Motion by Ms. Bowman is her second.
I second.
Second by Ms. Chapman. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, fine. The minutes are approved. The listed guest on our agenda is Sheriff Mark Richards. He called me this evening. He got, he's been to Atlanta today and he was, got stuck in traffic behind an accident. He, by the time he called, he was on his way and he expects to arrive a little later in the evening. So if there's no objection, I will skip his appearance at this point and recognize him once he arrives. Next item on the agenda is public requests.
Mr. Mayor, I have two things. The first one, I'd like to thank you and the city council for getting the road fixed over here on one twenty Park Street that was left uncovered by about that much. They got that pitch and I want to give y'all credit for doing that. And the second thing, who's responsible for putting up the speed breaker down here on forty seven? They weigh too high and then a little car has got front wheel drive, they knocked your front end out of line.
Well.
Just did you cross the railroad track on forty seven?
Mm-hmm.
There's three sets of speed breakers out there.
Well, they're not speed breaker, they're rumble strips.
Yeah.
That may be too high. That's a DOT.
They weigh too high.
I'll add a drop to that attention. I don't know if they're really fine.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the public request?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Counsel.
I'm Bobby Jones, case you don't know who I am. I'm representing the Historical Society, Talbot County Historical Society. And what we'd like to request is a lower rate on other water sewage in this building, down here, the brick building. The reason I'm saying that, we're paying the regular amount and have been, but we have, we have meetings at four times a year and we have property from two to four o'clock in the afternoon on Sunday. And that facilities are used maybe once to four times. And again, we have it open for Labor Day. And we're requesting that you, you and the board consider maybe giving us a reduced rate. Since we're nonprofit, we don't use water, we don't use facilities that many times. Think about that. We got a lot of old folks that gotta go to the bathroom when they're there.
Mr. Jones, that is a resolution on the agenda this evening, which I believe you read a copy of.
Right.
If you would like to speak again at that time.
Okay.
But I think it answers, it is the answer to your request.
Do I need to bring up about the building, the porch system?
I was going to bring that up under mayor's report, but since you have the floor, you go right ahead.
Okay. We done a self-help project down in the, in the historical building, the brick building. And on the northeast corner of that building, there's been a water leak and we discovered it about weeks, two weeks, maybe two weeks ago. And it's deteriorated the, the main beams on that corner all the way back to the building and across the second post down there, second pellet. And it's pretty, it's out of limits. In other words, this is hanging and it could fall. And we've had, had a guy to give us an estimate and I have another guy to give estimate to give the mayor to repair this. And of course, the building belongs to the city and that we're utilizing and have it in for some time. And also I have another estimate coming in on the roof, complete roof replacement over the porch. And I'll get that to you as soon as I receive. That's, that's all I got to say about that. Thank you, council and mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? I see if Mayor Richards has now arrived. Sheriff Richards.
I'm not just used to saying that. What we want to talk about first, the disorderly conduct, I know that was an issue that we was gonna bring up and I know that was a topic and also I asked for a little bit of help with nine one one and providing law enforcement. So we got two things.
Why don't you, why don't you explain the disorderly conduct?
Alright, I'll explain that first. We have, no matter where y'all be, stand, sit, or whatever, we have disorderly conduct in the county. Make sure my buckles tight and everything, 'cause I just rode from it. Make sure my pants wasn't, everything was up. We have disorderly conduct in the county. Now, I called the mayor, I don't know when it was in reference to, we had a person who hit another person, I don't want to get any names out there 'cause people maybe can, upside the head with a rock. And the city used to have disorderly conduct on a citation. And I don't know, he told me it got dropped, so I chewed him out on telephone. We had a little fuss and squabble in his back. I said, why'd you drop it? Because you don't want to put him in jail. So that's how the conversation come off. And so I called him up and he said, Mark, somehow it got dropped. And it's a whole lot easier to write a citation. Now, me as sheriff or one of my deputies cannot do a city ordinance on a city problem. So if I come up here to the city, I can't even write an ordinance in the city. It has to be his police officer. State law as the legislator, I don't know why, but that's the way it is. He can only enforce the city ordinance. Even though you have it, I can't enforce it by law. And that's our government force. I've been in Atlanta all day listening back and forth to all the house representatives while we do this. And second of all, it's a whole lot quicker to go ahead and write on citation than have to go through the judicial process, take out a warrant, go do a first appearance. I personally thought that he didn't want to pay a jail bill. So on a warrant, no matter what it is, the sheriff is responsible and the county is responsible for the bill. So the disorderly conduct, I haven't seen a draft of theirs. And I have one, but I haven't had a chance to make a copy 'cause that's our county one. And I would be sure as sheriff of this county that it's not used vindictive no kind of way. Now, I've heard it both sides in argument. When we have a county commission meeting, if there's some arguing and some fussing and some hollering, we let them go at it, you know? That, we're gonna have different opinions, we all are. And, you know, I don't, I can't see this council nor this mayor using it against y'all. So if anybody thought it was plotted up, I come up with idea because of another incident. Now, I can remain open for question if you want me to ask one. It was my idea, so it was not theirs. It was mine and I was upset because I thought he didn't want to pay the jail bill. And he told me it got dropped in two thousand and ten. I do know, and I can't remember if it was a lard or what chief it was, that they still had disorderly conduct. So when I had a problem, I called the chief over there to write a disorderly conduct and stick it on paper and don't have to go through picking them up, first appearance, bringing them over in front of a judge. And all that judicial process and due process that you can get by with just on disorderly conduct. So, you know, I wanted to be truthful with everybody. I wasn't gonna take sides. I'm gonna tell you where, what happened. I'd also, Mayor, like I said, I come in from the Capitol just a little while ago. You know, I have some calls that they have got together, you know, you was asking about how many, somebody was asking on the board how many nine one one calls it is versus city versus county. You know, they did a two-month summary right quick and you're looking at a hundred and sixty-five cities, nine one one calls in the city of Crawfville, and you have a hundred calls in Talbot County and ten calls in the city of Sherry. Now, you know, this stuff is not cheap and it's expensive. I mean, I got a bill for just a software update that was fifteen thousand dollars. Most cities and counties split nine one one, but I know the city can't afford it. So what I would like to do is to have some kind of leverage, I think you work how many hours a week, two, forty?
Forty hours a week. You have the rest of it.
I have the rest of it. So if I could get two thousand dollars a month to compensate some of them expenses, we're gonna have to get it from the county or the city. Now Renee, Mayor Brown, told me the other day that they were gonna allot some to it and I don't even think they incorporate it. So that's why I had asked to continue to keep the twenty-one hundred dollars and the mayor told me he didn't have the money. And I've asked the city council and council, y'all have any questions for me, I'd be glad to ask them.
What was the original agreement?
The original agreement to provide law enforcement and I, I meant to get the original agreement and you may have it, I don't know, you had a mayor.
Not, not with me.
I don't have with me neither. It was like twenty-one hundred dollars a month. And it was helping police and nine one one and stuff. You know, I can show you bill right here on fifteen thousand dollars for a software update for the nine one one. So that twenty-one hundred dollars did help me on the hundred, it's a hundred and sixty-eight hours, twenty-four times seven. It's nine out of eighty-five jobs like on a regular basis. It's twenty-four seven. He goes home, he worked well with me, giving me the report of what goes on. But when they call the sheriff's office, they want to say, share damn bird by the police. But we gotta try to work this bounce out and I gotta know what happened. So he does give me the report and we've been okay. We got off on a few issues, but everything's worked itself out. But somebody calls in the city, when they look at me, they say, you didn't come or you didn't do this right. I don't know nothing about it. But I called your dispatch. Just like no matter what happens, it's on me. And so I just trying to get a little money to fund these dispatches. Dispatching is not cheap. That nine one one is not cheap. Wills County charges us just for the trunk lines, excuse me, let me cut my telephone vibe right out of nowhere, it wanted to strike. Just for them trunk lines to run nine one one over here and I'll just glimpse through it and I can give everybody a copy of whatever they want. And this is funny, Dyson, I called him and I said, you know, you're getting out of nine one one business 'cause everybody's going wild and saying no money in it, so you gonna dump it on the counties. So we went together with Wills County and Talbot County combined one unit, but we still have to maintain our side of, our side of. Well, he has some trunk lines, I don't want to give y'all a, let me find the figure right There's our disorderly conduct in the county, if anyone wants to look at it. I want to say it's around, it's three to four to five thousand dollars every quarter to use George Dyson's telephone line. He got out of nine one one business, but I had to have a secure line, so I figured he would let us use it for free when he got out of nine one one business. But he charged me more than he was us for nine one one when he got out of it. And we talking three or four thousand dollars a quarter just to use a line. And I have it in here somewhere, I can show you. So Will's telephone is tough to deal with and I don't know if y'all had any experience with him or not, but he is, gonna be honest with you, he owns that telephone company and ain't nobody gonna step on top of it. That's the reason it took so long to get nine one one. I'm sorry that I don't have it. But that's what I asked for and I'll sit down and I know y'all may not make this.
More or less review what, you know, the previous agreement was.
Correct.
There was a period of time when the sheriff was responsible for policing the city of Crawfville. And the basis of that agreement was that between the taxes that city residents already paid the county, which are exactly the same as every other citizen of the county pays, that we would pay you the cost of one deputy.
Right.
Forty hours a week with the equipment cost for his vehicle.
Well, I never charged you for that part, but go ahead. It was so low.
That was what the agreement was. I mean, that was the content of the agreement.
But it was such a low figure that I didn't get into.
And we got billed some, something like thirty-two hundred and eleven dollars a month or something like that.
Yeah, thirty to eleven a month.
Or a, for a year.
Something like twenty-one fifty.
And after about a year's operation, you told us that you weren't.
Yeah, I just couldn't get into your city ordinances that you wanted reinforced.
You weren't happy with the way it was going.
Right, because, and let me explain.
Then we reactivated the police force.
Right.
Which had cut out that payment for a forty dollar, forty hour.
Correct. And I come back and ask for twenty-one fifty a month.
Then you didn't get it.
I didn't get it. And that's fine, whatever y'all decide is just board. Mine, I'm asking for some help, it's gonna have to go up some kind of way. It's just not cheap anymore and I don't know the solution. You know, we're sitting in a small room here in Crawfville, Georgia. I've been up here all day, they been fussing about money and the house representatives and they want to take away our drug seizure money on our twenty and give it to the state. So, you know, whatever happens, I would really appreciate it 'cause it would help me be able to run more efficiently. And, you know, and if you want to look at the agreement, I know it's putting it off another month and that's fine with me. But there was a lot of months where it didn't work that I didn't even charge you when we just did away with the agreement, but that's here and now say. I try to work the best with this board in the city I can. And any questions?
Yes, sir, I have a couple.
Yes, sir.
What does the nine one one system cost the county per year?
What it costs the county per year? It's around. What it costs the county per year, it's around three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollars a year.
Three hundred and fifty, four thousand?
Three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollars a year, around three, three fifty, now I don't have the quotes in front of me, but I know about figuring budget what it is. Don't quote me, dead on.
Okay, but it's in that range?
Yes.
Okay, now how many calls does nine one one get to the sheriff's department average in a week's time inside the city limits of Crawfville?
Well, I did it for two months, I didn't, I just took January and December, I gave Mr. Martin a copy, he knows. And I had given him a recently update, went on percentage of fire calls when he was working with the fire department, doing a good job there, I thought. For two months, you got a hundred and fifty seven calls within the city of Crawfville on nine one one. And I just went back two months, I can take it for the whole year, but this is a fact.
A hundred and fifty seven.
Hundred and fifty seven in the city limits of Crawfville.
Right.
Well, let me ask you, can you get the same service if you dial two, three, four, five as you would, I mean, if it's not a real emergency, you know, just worry about somebody. Walking around a yard or something, is that, is that the same?
I would have to, you, you need to ask the mayor that, but because I would. If you call two, three, four, five, in my personal opinion, you're gonna get a voice recorder, if he has not, if he's working his forty hours. He's go, you gonna get a voice recorder, am I correct? What happened? I mean, uh, uh, two, three, four, five, I thought.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're, that, whatever your number is.
Yeah.
You gonna get the sheriff's office, but you had to ask me previously about the city voice number.
No, I was just saying, this was, would, would you get the same, I, I'm not.
Oh, you gonna get the same, yes.
I'm not talking about the series, if that's where you don't.
You gonna get the same call, you gonna get the same response on two, three, four, five.
Maybe they get caught in the public with that, cause a lot of people don't realize that.
Well, it was hard to, the people always lived all their life to dial two, three, four, five to get used to having nine one one. And I still have people today that's lived here fifty years, they ain't gonna dial nine one one, they gonna dial two, three, four, five. So you getting the same center when you dial nine one one or two, three, four, five. Now, there was a question about when I dialed the city police department, someone asked me, and I can't remember who. If it's forty hours, and he's worked his forty, you're gonna get an answering machine.
Uh, who voted the nine one one in?
They, it was the legislator mandated after nine eleven, I think this lady back here is real good with law enforcement and grants. Excuse me about your name, Linda. Linda, nine one one was not voted in. It may have been voted in, but it was coming from federal law that you will have nine one one after nine eleven. So it wasn't something that we thought of and voted in, it's something Atlanta did to us, and Atlanta, the federal government really did. So it was mandatory.
Well, a little county like Crawfville cannot afford no three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand dollars a year for no nine one one, that's totally outrageous.
What you want me to do, go to jail?
No, I'm not asking that.
No, 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 I mean, but what, what, I'm trying to give me some options.
Yeah, all right, two things.
Yeah.
Before nine one one, we did just fine, you called the sheriff's department, or you could dial zero, get the long, get the operator and she could get it, pardon.
Yes. And you know, back in the day, and I'm not.
Nine one one is forced on us.
Yes, exactly.
And we don't like it.
I know, and that's why you should have been lying on me today. And I can't fix your problem here, I wish I could, Mr. Cooper, and I'm not trying to be short enough. But I don't like all them laws they forcing on me now, let me tell you what they trying to do now, if y'all wanna talk about something. All drug seizure money goes to the state, it does not go for equipment, it does not go for cars, it does not go for anything. If you seize any money, the governor wants it, so do you think that's right? I think it's not right. Well, this county has not bought a car, and we tore up a bunch of them, okay? I can't help it, we have some problems and we will address some problems, there's been some tore. Now, every car for the last five or six years has been bought with seizure money off of I twenty. Truck, car, Tahoe, whatever they riding in, has not been bought with taxpayers' dollars, not one penny.
Oh, now, I mean, uh, now, a year or so ago, I talked to you about that, and you told me that the sheriff's department owned. Two cars and the rest of them were bought with county money, is that so?
Drug seizure money. But now, there is a difference, some cars are titled to the county, some are titled to the sheriff. We don't own them personally, but we bought them with drug seizure money. The county did, has not bought me a car. I bought it through drug seizure money, I work in I twenty, and when you cut somebody coming through with a load of money that is dope related, then we seize the money. We don't go sell the dope, a lot of folks say, hey, you go sell the dope, get the money, no, that's not what we're doing, it's gotta be seizure money. And, and that's what we're talking about, the due process, and that's what one of these defense lawyers, and, and I'll tell you a problem. In nineteen seventy seven, there was eighteen thousand lawyers in the state of Georgia. There's forty four thousand lawyers today in the state of Georgia. And I look up there and where it used to be good people and lawyers are good people, they're not bad people. Where you don't have all this language, lumber jumbo, that I can't understand, gotta get a lawyer to read it to me, I'm depending on him. I can't ask why this country changed like it has.
Uh, when you replace, when you buy a new vehicle for the sheriff's department. And you replace old, and how come it's not put up for bid where you take that money and put it back into operation?
The reason they, they have not been put up for bid because from two thousand to two thousand and ten, all the parts worked on them Crown Vics. So instead of us having a high part bill, we would take parts off of cars, and matter of fact, we'd give some to the city. We would take car, parts off of cars and put on the cars, because transmission was the same, motor was the same, we could use them. If I sold them for two thousand dollars, a motor which would cost me four thousand dollars to buy, I had one. Then the car may have been raggedy or wrecked or hit with a deer or something, but I could use that motor. So then I would go up to George Hughes and we'd work on it, and we swapped the motor out trying to save taxpayers' dollars.
So George Hughes does work for the sheriff's department?
He does some of it, not every bit of, there's also some work done over at the tire warehouse, so it's, it's split.
Uh, when you finally junked out a car, do you set it for junking?
When a car is finally junked out, what we do is we put it on govdeals dot com. And with govdeals dot com, somebody around him may not want it, but in New York, New York City, them tax care drivers love them Crown Vics. So if you got one that has all the fenders left on it, possibly by the time it gets through patrol and two hundred thousand miles. They will buy it in New York City and give you two or three thousand dollars for it, cause they want.
Yeah.
Because of the parts, but a lot of times, the motors are out, transmission's out, but they still may need a fender or something. Them Crown Vics are a hot issue in New York City, where down here, you won't get two hundred dollars for.
So, so that money goes back into the county budget?
Yes, it saves off the county budget, and also the money that's sold with the county cars goes back into the general account.
And, and it's subtracted from the county budget for the next year.
It is, it is given to the general account, now I can't answer about the, I have a sheriff account that they allocate the money out. But I give them my budget, I can't answer a general budget, okay? Cause I never see any money, all I see is drug seizure money, it's counted, it's audited. It has four people counting it when it's seized, it has two people going to the bank, I can't answer about the general account, so you'd have to ask somebody.
See, I don't, I don't never see where there's a minus sign on nothing, sure, where anything's coming in, where it's subtracted from the total budget, so it ought to be.
See, I, I can't ask that question, cause all I have is a sheriff budget.
Okay, somebody else is telling me.
You, you know, I, I, I just, you know, I, I, I can't show you a negative, uh.
Okay.
I, I don't handle that side of the budget, yes, sir, Mr. Martin.
Um, if, if I may, getting back to Dorsey's first question.
Yes, sir.
He asked, uh, how many calls were in the city?
Yes.
And I think you, I think you, when you went through it earlier, uh, sheriff, you, you said. If I was correct, that there were also ten calls over that ten, ten, over that two month period in the town of Sharon?
Fifteen is what I have, and I'm sorry if I said ten, I've got stats from way back.
Uh, a hundred from the county?
A hundred in the county, a hundred fifteen in county.
Hundred and fifteen?
Yes, sir.
One, one, five, and how many were, were in that two month period where responding to calls I have on I twenty?
In the county, I don't have that breakdown.
On, on the freeway?
I don't have that breakdown in the county, but I can say.
Some of those hundred and fifteen would be from I twenty.
Yes.
Would you say half, three quarters?
I would hate to speculate and tell you something wrong, because then it would just come back, I'd rather give you the figures. And let you look at it, because I don't wanna say anything that's wrong with you. And you know, you can say something and try to be helping a little bit and say a wrong figure, and then somebody hold you, you know. Not that you would, but I'm, I, I'm willing to give you.
Well, it ju, it ju, just looks like from the numbers. Um, there's not much activity in Sharon, and, and there's probably not much activity in the county. Depending on how much is out on I twenty, but there's an awful lot in the city.
Yes, sir, nine one one is used a lot in the city. You know, we had to buy a generator to run that place, because when it snows, we don't have no power. And that generator, and I, I know you, you know, we gotta all work as a team with this thing, we can't. Fight against each other and county taxes go up and no participation, if we're gonna be a city, we need to have a little bit of help. I mean, like I call Renee, and, and I understand the mayor at that point, if you don't have it, well, I, my first thing is to him, we'll find it, you know? But that, I understand.
You know where, you know where we find it, in the pockets of those people right out there.
Well, I know that.
It's the only place it comes from.
Well, I know that, but it's still gonna come from somewhere, and I'd like for the city to contribute. Now, you know, I, I had some questions about. You know, and I'm not gonna ask you, we all sit down with you about your city police budget, you know, and, and if, if it's not under my business, I understand that, but we gotta work as a team.
The budget's an open record.
Yeah, budget's open records, and I, I was gonna sit down and try to get an understanding of your budget before I brought it out to public. Cause I didn't understand about some supplies and stuff and, and I knew it was not fair, but I, I was just asking for city council if y'all would vote to please. Give me a little bit of money to help work. So, you know. I was asking for a vote, but you know, he might not put it. I don't know if y'all have probably rules or order how y'all bill gap.
I don't think we're ready for, for votes tonight, I hope, I hope they're not ready to vote to give away money they don't have before they figure out where they gonna get it. They certainly not in a current in our budget.
Well, that's what I wanted to know, but um, are you gonna give them a chance to say that, or you gonna say that? I mean, you said that, what y'all, can I ask them?
Chance to, uh.
Can I ask them?
Can you come here if they wish at this time?
I like looking at budgets and see what's in there, before, you know, to make sure we got everything, what we need to have, and discuss it and go through it. That, what we can do not to bring taxes, good and gracious.
So that's your decision and your decision and your decision. Discuss it first and table till next month. Okay, as long as that's city council, Mr. Bobby, is that your decision? Now, I don't want you to say that, just say, okay, I wanna know.
Would you discuss the song with that girl, and uh, be on the same page with her?
Well, that's all I asked.
Uh, did I understand you to say a while ago that the little arguments that we have in this type of thing are not disorderly conduct?
No, I think it'd be a violation of constitutional right, and I will be here if there's a inappropriate action taken. And I will step in if it's used against anyone, city or not, you cannot take that to be vindictive. If you do, I will be here, and I will know, you know, county, if they wanna fuss, but they start locking people up, and I'm not saying against anybody will. But we let them fuss at it, you know, it's, 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 it's an agreement, places. But just cause somebody cussed or said a cuss word, and I don't think it, but if, if somebody jumps on your face and starts cussing you down there. I'm probably gonna go along and say that was a good idea, but if y'all have a disagreement, we keep our distance, you won't hear from me, but I, you know, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Ruth.
I wanna know, you seem irritated about the nine one one calls, I would like to know what sort of issues we should have. To justify calling nine one one, I have been a frequent caller.
Oh, we, we, look, we, we love you to call nine one, we love to help, all I just wanted was a little participation from the city. We don't mind coming, we're gonna come, we're gonna be there, you know, i- i- if it has to come out of county taxpayers, or whatever we got to do. I'd just like to see and a, a team work together, city, county and all. Now, you know, if I can't have a collaborative effort, then, you know, I wanna know where I stand with this board. You know, and, and, it, that's all I asked.
I, I have, uh, whatever, excuse me, end of the line down there near the park?
Yes, ma'am.
And there's a vacant house next to me.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know what kinda activity is taking place over there, but that has been some of the reasons that I have called. Just come and shine your light, that's all I want.
That's all you got to do, and you call nine one one, I don't know his schedule, his hours, you call nine one one, I'm coming. I'm gonna be there for you, and I'm gonna answer nine one one call, I don't care if the cat hung in the tree or the dog is hung up over here. An emergency at that time is important to you, what's an emergency at that time may not be an emergency to everybody else, but it's an emergency to you, I'm gonna be there for you.
I thought nine one one was more or less, uh, say, somebody had a wreck, somebody was sick, they were having a stroke or something like that. I didn't know you called about a cat in the tree or a dog.
There is no one to call me to come get the cat out of the tree, but I was using that as a phrase.
Well, cause I'll call you when mine gets in the tree, what I'm saying is that I thought nine one one was. A really, really, really an emergency.
Who determines what's an emergency?
Well, but now, if she sees suspected, you know, mischief or something like that. Why come she couldn't call the two, three, four, five number?
It's same thing, you hitting it, when you dial two, three, four, five, I gotta have somebody in there twenty four seven to answer that telephone.
So it's still going on, call a nine one one.
I don't wanna confuse nine one one, if you dial two, three, four, five, you gonna get the same lady. If I pick up this telephone, you dial nine one one, it's going to the same center, same dispatcher.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that.
Or even if you call two, three, four, five, we still gotta address it. It's mandatory, you gotta be twenty four seven, so you got, you know, you got a hundred and sixty eight hours, it takes four and a half people just to cover nine one one in a week's time. One week's time, because it's twenty four times seven, a hundred and sixty eight, four and a half people to cover. Then you don't, the paperwork is unguarded, I think Ms. Linda worked a little bit in law enforcement, and I don't know when she was in it, but it's changed a lot. Then you got the deputies, and this is what I have a disagreement about. They got a forty hour police, he goes home, I got a hundred and twenty eight hour left police. Now, if, I don't think we'd be having this discussion too much if I didn't have to cover the city a hundred and twenty eight hours. If they wanted to fulfill their full-time police department, I'd step aside, let them do it. But they don't have that in place, so that's where I have a little problem, it's not nine one one, it's in general. With policing too.
Mark, if the, if they vote to give you a twenty one fifty, that means they gotta raise taxes, that comes back to it. We don't have no way of raising our money to get, to make up for that difference.
Right. But let me, let me explain. Yeah, but let me explain this, you need to get on the phone with your senator and your legislator, cause they putting rules on top of me that I gotta mandate. So you really need to get in touch with your senator and your house representative, because they're the one who makes these rules. And also not just state rules, you got federal law, thi- this, this radio system. That's another thing we had to transfer over from analog to digital, we could've stayed analog or digital, but it was coming to it at some point in time, we went digital. That cost was around a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars, it comes straight off the county budget. And I never asked them anything, cause I knew I was gonna probably get the same reception that I got tonight. But, you know, we gotta work as a team effort, I called Mayor Brown, I said, look, we need some money, I know y'all are in corporations, he says, sure, I love you, sir. So, you know, what's she gonna do? I don't know, but thank you for your time, and if I need to explain anything else, thank you.
Mark, I like to, I, I read this, and it looks like the same attorney that drafted the city. Almost drafted this one, because it's virtually word for word.
Jay Jones drafted mine.
No, he draft drafted ours.
I, and I can tell you, there's some case law I turned up that was, it's been misused, so that's why, if it's misused in this city. I will be on top of it, it's a good tool, but if it's misused, then the Supreme Court's gonna take it away from us, so. It will not be misused, or do I will step in and have someone down here. So it will not be used vindictive or no kind of way, if it is, you call me, we'll sit down and we'll decide if it was. That line or not, okay?
I got one more thing I wanna say too.
Yes, sir.
Uh, out, out of the, out of our county taxes that we pay here in the city to the county. You're the only service that we get, we don't get nothing else from the county, they do nothing else for us.
The county?
Yeah, in the city.
They fund the fire department, do y'all pay the fire department? No way. The, the county don't, the county don't. I'm, I, I, he asked me about the county, and I told him the county pays the fire department, but I asked the city. I don't know what you get funded from the city, do y'all fund the fire department?
We have purchased a truck, but.
Y'all purchased a truck?
We got purchased.
Y'all purchased a truck. And I, and I, and I, let me, I, I don't want you to think they don't give me nothing, they do give me free. They do give me free water at sheriff's office, I don't want y'all thinking, and I think free water.
Water, gas and.
The gas you don't pay for, because I guess.
We pay for the gas. We pay for the gas for the department.
Well, I oh, okay, but I'm talking about the sheriff's office, cause we have generators, like a twenty thousand dollar generator. That we bought used. It was fifty thousand dollars at Home Depot. They reconditioned. They're good, but they run off propane gas because the city gas line is not extended out there for natural gas. We also have to run with a separate tank, I put a little bit of uh, with the sewer line. Oh, do y'all stop the sewer line at the city limits sign or do y'all?
No, it stops at um, Schuman uh.
Schuman, who is a Schuman?
Used to be Crystal Elliott uh.
So they don't. So they don't go see them assign the city, you don't provide a service or sewer to see them?
Once it starts downhill, it stops.
Because of pumping it back up the hill costs, so I don't wanna do that.
Right.
Well, it looks like the money that the county gets out of us right here would compensate for you for that money you need.
They do, but I'm trying to take a burden off of that just a little bit. It's all on the county. I'm trying to help a burden with the, you know, I'm trying, I'm not here as a spokesperson. I'm trying to get some help because I see some stuff going up. This software fifteen thousand dollars, I guarantee next year it'll be fifteen thousand dollars. It's gonna be eighteen to twenty thousand dollars. When it first started out, it was nine thousand. So things go up every day. I can't buy gas what I bought for twenty-five years ago.
Yeah, I know that.
These software folks are going up.
And the taxes have to come in and reassess our land, made our land.
Made mine go too and I couldn't pay my taxes. I had to wait a day off deadline to pay my taxes. I pay a penalty, so I I'm mad too.
We got all we can save.
I got all I can save and 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 you know, it's, I can't fix it here. If I could, I. I wouldn't be standing here tonight. It's a lot of problems and I understand it's hard for this board. Hard for this city council. But I was just asking for a little help, you know, also the ambulance, we dispatch the ambulance. We keep power on twenty-four seven. If you have a heart attack and it's the snow and the storm is down, we also still have power running. I don't think there's a full service place here unless it's a school that has capabilities of running for five days without power. It is one place since Clark County Sheriff's Office now. I don't know any other place. Do y'all? Do y'all have a shelter like we went down five days and and for God's sakes, I always said it won't happen to me, but it has, just about. I done been through the wringer. Uh, is there any other building that I know of that can run two or three days and run full power heat and everything?
Have they got anything that's a senior citizen store?
I I don't know.
It's supposed to be the shelter for an emergency, but I'm not sure about the power.
Look, I I I I'm I'm out of breath. I've been talking with the senators today and stuff and I'm told that I've been in oral argument with the Supreme Court about the issue too and. I'm out of breath, but if y'all don't even answer anything, I'm glad to answer.
I'm I'm done.
Okay. And sugar, you call nine one one anytime. Don't.
I've never called about a cat.
I know you, but don't get me wrong. No, I was, I was.
I don't have problems with my cats.
Is that paraphrase? I gotta ask for my educated aunt because that was paraphrasing something.
She's using that as an example. Well, it was not a good example.
No, I was talking to the audience in general when I said if they call about a cat and I don't, I for, I Aunt Kenny, I had to say paraphrase does mean what I was trying to say to them, so.
My cats are shut up in a building at night, Mark.
You call me if that cat gets out. I'll come on and help you get it put up.
I'm concerned about that green house. Go over there, burn it down. Well, I can't do that. And by golly, that would take care of that problem.
I've asked for that.
What would you have to do to do this?
You'd probably have to put on referendum and vote on it.
Well, why don't you do it?
Well, the referendum has to be drawn up. You just can't do it like that. You got Aunt Kenny is smarter than I am as far as.
Well, I just thought maybe if you can do that, it'd be, it would solve a lot of problems.
I haven't, I haven't been there. But it would be a help as what I see in the projected future. And I'm not saying to discredit anything up here, but it works in Richmond County, it works in Clark County. Why isn't it feasible here? So I I can't ask the question. I hadn't had it up.
In Jacksonville, Florida, their 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 whole county was like that.
I haven't had a study to see what it would, you know, somebody to project.
Just what you have to do to do that, that's all.
Gotta get it on referendum and to get it on referendum, I don't know how to do that yet. I know how to get my own name in the ballot, but that's about it. Well, you know, it has to be the governor's authority. Mayor, you may know how to get a referendum.
If you talk about consolidation, we had a representative from uh. Call Vincent Institute.
They was asking me, well.
Come down. Um. About five years ago. And um, explained the procedure to an announced meeting and. I don't think anybody showed up but the county commissioners and myself. Nobody else uh.
Right.
Nobody else came.
Could be like dispassion.
And basically, you you have to have a committee. That reviews all of the activities performed by both governments.
Right.
And they have to develop a plan.
And they do it.
For how those ought to be handled and. It has to be all laid out in a uh. And there's prescribed procedures, steps that you have to go through.
And don't they do a study?
Before you ever get to the point of having a referendum, you've gotta have a a plan that's.
A plan and then they do a study and see what it's gonna save and then they, it it's it's a long process, but a lot of counties do it, so.
The Vincent Institute will work with us, but uh. We've gotta have uh, local folk who wanna do the. All the committee work that has to be done.
And and what's not fair is I don't know who lives in a city in the, I do know who if I sit down and look who lives in a city versus the county. But that would have to be another tax district for the sewer and for the uh, other stuff that you have. You live within a city limits.
I think you can be on authority of a tax district.
Yeah, authority or something, but it's a different tax.
But it's got to be separate. From the.
Correct.
The other business.
The other business, but it it's it's, they come in as a different, I think you have to have.
It'd have to be a some uh, street lighting district because the people in town have street lights, the people out in the center don't.
That's what they fussing about now and I'll tell y'all right quick. I know y'all got to go. They're fussing about now, cities and counties sending out tax bills. And they're putting up underneath their mosquito control and all kind of these things and they going by the fire thing. Well, they're up there fussing right now about that they do not wanna pay for them services. And 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 they got all that lingual mingle, jump over lawyer and like you, they tired of paying taxes, but guess what? You get a tax bill. It had eighty-two times taxed on there, but at the bottom of it, it had mosquito control. It had a uh, um, um. All kind of services that city do and they hang your tax bill and at the bottom of it, you pay for their service. And in my opinion, a simple quick fix would have been if they would have took and added in when they did their budget. Stuck it in the budget and then did the budget instead of listing my, I might later on. But I guess they have a reason for why they wanna do that, but it really, it looked like to me, but you know. That's what the house representative or senators gets paid for. Senators, thank y'all. I'm tired.
Returning to the agenda. Mayor's report. The um, city today received a uh, notice that. A suit is being filed. For actions of former uh, police chief Ronnie Evans. Alleging that he assaulted someone. I'm not going into any details. I have uh. Forwarded the matter to the city attorney and uh. All future actions by the city are gonna be at his direction.
May I ask you a citizen, is that a civil suit, civil liability?
That is a civil suit.
Civil liability.
Yes.
Did they put your notice within six months?
I think within six months of the event.
They gotta put you, light them, put your notes in six months, so it wasn't six months of it. So a lawsuit.
It happened September the eighth, Sheriff. What do I got here?
Right.
I have a note on about the uh, roof at the um. Historical society. I think Mr. Jones has uh. Coveted very well. There there are two problems I have. One is. The beams that support the uh, the roof structure have rotted. The other is. The reason those beams rotted is because the roof is leaking and it needs to be repaid and that's two separate uh. Activities and. It's our building, even though the historical society uh. Is the sole occupant and it's still uh, city property and we have to maintain it. We will get prices and determine uh. What cost to be incurred and whether it's uh. It's a small enough repair that uh, we just handle it within the budget or if it's something that we'll not have to. Take dibs on and uh. Bring it back to the city council for approval. Moving on to the financial reports. This is the uh, one month's operations in the months in the uh, year twenty thirteen. It's uh. Difficult to make any uh, assessments of uh. Of where we're going with just one month's balance, but uh. On the uh, the first page of the about the balance sheet, you can see what funds we have. Uh, you note that uh, we have the. The T slots account identified for the first time. These are the uh, the funds that will be twenty-five percent of the sales tax that will be coming into the city. And can be used for various load improvement projects. They're supposed to begin transferring funds to that account this month. I hope we will see that grow in future months. Going to the um, operations budget. The first um, sheet shows the. Income for one month's operation. And um, it shows that uh. We have about uh, nine hundred dollars less than. Than was budgeted. It also shows that we had no revenues from fines and forfeits. With our radar license suspended. That's not surprising. We can't. Issue any traffic tickets. The uh. The expenses under ran by uh, thirty-two hundred dollars, so. There's no real uh. Real problem overall. Can look at the um, the next sheet. It's cost to general government. And there are the expenses of operations. They under ran by some uh. Fifteen hundred plus dollars. The uh, judicial cost. Since we had no traffic tickets, uh, we had no cost. For municipal court. Public safety. We did not have a uh. Any significant cost sale. We under ran by about forty-six hundred dollars. For one month's operation. The uh, public work. That's one place where we did uh. Slightly overrun the budget. Various uh, street repairs and uh, other work that we did around the city. The next balance sheet is for the uh. Enterprise operation. See that we have uh. Still have funds in the bank uh, from uh. That are adequate to meet our needs going forward. First page of the operations budget uh, is the water and sewer fund. Our revenues, they've been seventeen hundred dollars greater than uh. The budget. Our expenses have been uh, nine thousand dollars. Most of that is due to the fuel surcharge because of the uh. Continuing high cost for purchasing fuel. And moving on to old business. First item is a, a public hearing on ordinance. Twenty thirteen dash two dash one. An ordinance amended the code of ordinances of the city of Prophetville, Georgia. To establish the offense of disorderly conduct at administration of same. To repeal all ordinances in conflict with same, to establish an effective date and for other purposes. This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak to this ordinance?
Yes, sir. Could you explain that in detail, please, what that means?
Uh, the city currently does not have a disorderly conduct ordinance on the books. It is, if a person is cited, then they must be cited under the state. Uh, disorderly conduct law which puts it in the county's jurisdiction. And it means that if they are sent to jail, that uh, the county will be responsible for paying any. Boarding expenses that uh.
If it was a warrant, I I missed the first part of the conversation. I'm sorry we're talking about.
If they cited.
Then the city will pay if it's on citation. The county pays if it's a warrant.
But if, so if we have an ordinance on the books, then it can be cited under the city ordinance. The uh, if the person, it has to be jailed. The bill for jail will come to us. And uh. That person will ultimately be tried in municipal court rather than in uh. The uh. Circuit court.
And 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 also, I'm not trying to interrupt, may I speak, mayor? Uh, if you don't, if they don't like the disposition side of it in. City court, they can always appeal it. Those are appealing all the way up to Superior Court, so it it ain't like it's just. One court and that's it. That's not the end of it. So I don't want anybody to think you come to this court and you get fined. You may get fined, but there is ain't some more steps to it.
It'll be tried in front of George Judge Falk here and the.
Yes.
City gets the money to the county here and the bill has to be tried six months later.
That's correct. Cause most of the people likely to be cited for disorderly conduct probably not gonna have much money, so they may be doing community service.
Anything they have to do.
Anyone else? Public hearing is closed. Further discussion is limited to the council. Council members, you have the ordinance before you. Do I hear a motion to adopt?
I'm motion to adopt orders. Two zero one three dash two dash one.
Motion by Ms. Stewart. Is there a second?
I have second.
Second by Ms. Chapman. Any discussion? Call roll on a motion to adopt.
Mr. Chapman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Stewart, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Chapman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor, how do you vote?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. It goes into effect immediately upon successful passing.
Mayor, has this been running the paper for three months? Do y'all have to do the same as the county?
It's been running for three months. It has to be run.
Before it comes effective, it's gotta be written in the paper, because we did it. Now, your lawyer may be telling you different, do like he said.
Don't think so, Mark. He certainly didn't give us any caution.
Okay, as long as that, you got legal advice and that. But we ran out on the paper, but you know, it may be different now.
Hey, the next public hearing is on ordinance twenty thirteen dash two dash two. An ordinance amended section 2.2 of code of ordinances of the city of Prophetville to repeal all ordinances in conflict with same to establish an effective date and for other purposes. The ordinance would do two things. One, it's currently required by the city code that the minutes of previous meetings be read at a council meeting. And no, no other organization where the minutes are required to be read at each meeting. This change was made at the request of the city clerk who has had the obligation to make those readings. The second change is to change the section of the code that lists a space on each agenda for public grievances to a place for public requests. Ms. Lois Richards did this, made this change on her own and it's been followed through along the, since that time at listing it as public requests. But to avoid any future conflict with the contents of the city code. This makes what we're doing essentially approves what's been done in the past and continues to be done. This is a public hearing on the ordinance.
I just have one question. My name is Kendall Richards. Is it required that the city clerk has to read the minutes? Is it possible that someone else, a city council member or you or anyone else could read the minutes?
Certainly, anyone could read them. Anyone else?
I have a question. I'm George Richards. You know, I think reading the minutes gives the individuals in the audience a little chance to refresh and know what was said before. And when we're in the timeframe for us to be able to speak, we have no reference to what was done or wasn't done. And I don't think we need to have to go up to city hall and read the minutes through truly anybody else. I think they should be said at the meeting. Like I say, anybody could read the minute. And what about approval of corrections? You must have approval of corrections at least once in a while.
The preliminary minutes are posted on the website within a few days after each meeting. And they remain there until such time as they become approved minutes. And then they move from preliminary minutes to approved minutes. So they are available for a considerable period of time before the council meets. Also, they will be distributed to the council members before they come to a meeting. So they have the opportunity to review them for corrections.
Would it be too much of a trouble just to draw some up and have them send them over? Just to pick up one and look at it and let them relax?
Do what?
Would it be too much trouble if you have some running off as like seven, I could let them pick up ones when they come here and do that?
No, we just have some estimate of how many people are coming. I mean, sometimes making ten copies would be a waste when you're only gonna have three people to show up.
Remember, you can call the, call this, ask for a copy.
Hi, I'm Linda Franklin. I have one question. I've noticed, this is just fairly administrative in nature. I've noticed that almost every time that we hear the minutes being read, that there'll be some minor things picked up. You know, just like, for instance, in this one today, it was the numbering was a little off. Just, what's the mechanism going to be for picking up those kinds of errors? Because if they're not corrected somehow, then they could, I could see where that could cause problems downstream.
Well, each, each council member will receive a copy at home prior to the meeting. It's their responsibility to review them and search for such.
But I came up there tonight and looked at your bulletin and you don't, you didn't have the hour that the meeting was being held on the bulletin. Now, if I would go rely just upon the bulletin, I wouldn't know what hour to show up here, doesn't exist. You had a bulletin out on the window.
The marquee board?
No, it was just a.
The thing you have in your office that goes by this says Tuesday, 10 o'clock?
If you decide not to read the minutes, I would like to volunteer, if you'll get in touch with me before the meeting, I'll print off ten copies to hand out, no expense to the city. I'll hand them out, city council meeting before it starts.
Anyone else? Public hearing is closed. Further discussion is limited to the council. Council, you have before you ordinance twenty thirteen dash two dash two. Is there a motion to adopt?
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance twenty thirteen dash two dash two.
Motion by Ms. Bowman. Is there a second?
I have second.
Second by Ms. Chapman. Any discussion? Call roll, motion to adopt. Ordinance twenty thirteen dash two dash two.
Ms. Bowman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Stewart, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Chapman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman, how do you vote?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted unanimously. Next item on the agenda is new business. This is a resolution prepared in response to the request that Mr. Jones outlined earlier. Resolution twenty thirteen dash zero zero three providing for modified water and sewer charges. Whereas section thirty eight dash one hundred B of the Prophetville city code provides that all usage fees and sewer rates for use of the city water and sewer system shall be set from time to time by resolution of the city council. And whereas the city of Prophetville has adopted basic water and sewer rates anticipating that properties will be in use throughout the billing cycle. And whereas some nonprofit corporations serving the city of Prophetville use their property only once per month or less. And whereas these nonprofit corporations have limited funds and find the cost of basic water and sewer service prohibited. Now therefore be it resolved that the Prophetville mayor and city council desire to set special rates for nonprofit corporations that use their property three or less days per month. The special rate is limited as follows. The rate only applies to months when usage does not exceed 500 gallons. For any month when usage exceeds 500 gallons, the current basic rates applicable to all other customers shall apply. The special rate for qualifying nonprofit corporations are one-third of the current minimum charge for each service available at the location. Currently, the water charge will be $6 and the sewer charge will be $7. All other rules applicable to water and sewer customers shall apply to these customers. Customers with delinquent accounts do not qualify for this rate unless the account is first paid in full. To receive these special rates, a customer must notify the city that they are eligible to receive them under the above terms. If utility services are turned on for an event and then turned off afterward, payment must be made in advance. If the payment is by someone other than a nonprofit corporation, it must be by cash, cashless check, or money out. The special rates become effective upon adoption of this resolution. Floor is open for public comment.
Mr. Jones? I think I've said what I need to say. Historical society, that, we have a meeting once a quarter. And the facilities may be used during that meeting or may not be used. In addition to that, on Labor Day, we opened up the building for anyone that's come in to visit and buy things, which we don't have every year. No, all of you see it. And sometime people will go back there and use it. That's one time affair. The rest of the month, you know, the water's not used, the commutes are not used. So we're actually paying more than we, than we've got available to pay, because we're nonprofit. But we, but we sell items and build up our fund to pay our electric bill, water bill, and that's it. And just, that's about all I can say. And council, I appreciate you looking at this. And it would help us to maintain our historical society and keep above board, which right now is kind of hard to do. And meantime, we got, we have to let you know what we're doing and take it out of our pockets. We're doing a self-help program and we're updating the facilities of the, in the bathroom or latrine, whatever you wanna call it. And we're doing that ourselves. Me and in the Historical Society doing the work. And what we have to buy is a limited amount of cash being output. And you welcome to come out and look at it. It's gonna be pretty good. It's not gonna cost the city. We do, because the building belongs to the city, but we use it. So we're trying to maintain it. And be a good place to, to visit and invite, any of you can come visit us. It's open to the county. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, the council, for looking at this and hopefully it will help us out. Thank you.
Any other comments? Council, you have before you resolution twenty thirteen dash zero zero three. Is there a motion?
I motion that we adopt resolution twenty thirteen dash zero zero three.
Motion by Ms. Stewart. Is there a second?
I have second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Any discussion? Call roll on a motion to adopt.
Ms. Stewart, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Chapman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted unanimously. Council members, that completes the agenda. Any council members have any comments? Somebody wanna make a motion?
I motion that we.
No, that's really a make.
Yes.